Good afternoon, everyone. Sorry for the delay. We've just had some technical difficulties. That's why this is being recorded and will be uploaded after. So I'll call the committee of the whole to meeting. Or meeting to order, please. And some opening comments. First, I would like to just remind everybody that Earth Day is coming up next Monday. And if you can get out and help keep our community clean, keep your bins closed so that the wind and the seagulls don't get everything. And just help us look after our valley for Earth Day. And I want to start out with some volunteer. Thank you. So Crystal, do you want to start, please?
Yeah, I just want to thanks all the coaches and managers of all the youth sports in our community. We couldn't have the variety of youth sports in our community without the volunteers who coach and manage those teams. So thank you to all of those that take time to teach our youth.
Yeah, and as well, congratulations to volunteering because volunteerism truly makes the community a better place to be. It's a great way to get involved in the community and be a part of something bigger. Meet new like-minded people and bring personal satisfaction. So thank you for all you do.
I'd like to congratulate and thank all of the volunteers for all of the community associations out there. I get the opportunity to go to many community association meetings and the people who volunteer. Midland Community Association, Knack Mine, Newcastle, Rosedale, Wayne, East Cooley. They all do an incredible job for the community and keep up the good work.
And I want to thank the community as a whole. I think it's fantastic the amount of people that are actually out there picking up garbage for the Earth Day Challenge. It's just phenomenal. I come down South Hill after going to a doctor's appointment and I see all mix of people like from five years old to sixty, seventy, eighty out there picking up garbage with their bags and it's just, it warms my heart to see that they care about this community so much. So thank you to them. I know there are signs they don't get recognized for putting in volunteer hours because it's not on a committee or board. But every little thing they do helps this whole community. So thank you.
I wanted to thank you, those who give their time for volunteer work. And let them know even though you are not in the spotlight, you are the backbone of every event. Please know that we could not do this without you and we are very thankful for all the time you have given. So thanks for volunteering.
I'd just like to send out a general thank you to all of the volunteers who make our town a great place to live, work and play. Your work is truly appreciated. Thank you.
I just want to send out a great thank you to all of the newcomers in the valley, people who move here and volunteer and try to get out and actually help make the community better. It's a great way to meet and introduce yourselves to people in the community and it's a fantastic way to kind of breathe new life into some of our groups and help give new ideas and ambitions for making our community better.
And on behalf of council, administration and everyone else, we just want to really send a shout out to all the volunteers. There's so many different facets of ways to volunteer in this community and then thank you to Lisa. I am so passionate about the twenty twenty day challenge and cleaning up Earth Day. So I'd love if everybody could get out, enjoy the sunshine and help keep our community clean. And continue to reach the vision of being the cleanest, friendliest, most sought-after community in Alberta. All right. Any other additions to the agenda, Crystal?
Just to announcement of AGM.
Sure.
So Travel Drumheller AGM is this Thursday at the Badlands Apotheter from six till seven thirty. So if you're interested about tourism and what Travel Drumheller has planned for this year and next, come out. Thanks.
Thanks, Crystal. Okay, any additions to the agenda? No, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as presented, please? Stephanie?
I move that council adopt the agenda for the April fifteenth, twenty twenty four Committee of the Whole meeting as presented.
Secondary, Patrick. All in favor? Carried. Can I get a motion to adopt the minutes of March eleventh, Committee of the Whole, please? Tony?
I move that council approve the minutes for the March eleven, twenty twenty four Committee of the Whole meeting as presented.
Secondary, please. Stephanie. Comments? All in favor? Carried. And can I get a motion to accept the minutes from the Drumheller Housing Administration, please, Crystal?
I move that council accept as information the Drumheller Housing Administration regular meeting minutes of September nineteenth, twenty twenty three and December twelfth, twenty twenty three as presented.
Secondary, please. Patrick. All in favor? Carried. And can I get motion for the minutes of Seniors Foundation, please, Tom?
Yeah, I move the council accept as information the Drumheller and District Seniors Foundation regular meeting minutes of February twenty ninth, twenty twenty four as presented.
Secondary, Lisa. Comments? All in favor? Carried. Okay, let's move on to eight point one point one, please, Colt.
All right, yeah. So we're here to talk about the request for decision for the land use amending bylaw, twelve twenty four. So how it came to be originally was we were going to make some changes to the solar energy systems, secondary suites, tourist dwellings and communication structures. Palliser Regional Municipal Services kind of started the process and looked it over and came back with a bunch of comments. And just kind of just get a more comprehensive review. So from there, Mitchell, myself and Connor did a complete review of the bylaw and this is kind of what we came up with. So a lot of the stuff is clerical issues, like it says capitalization, punctuation, numbering, et cetera. Changing to words and provisions that don't change anything in particular, just more ironing it out and making it sound cleaner. But there is a number of changes, so.
Yeah, so all of our changes are highlighted in the RFD, all the major changes. So we highlight, we broke it into different sections. And so the first section, we detail the type of change, so a removal or more of a wording change or an addition of a provision. And that will be the major changes throughout the document. And then if you go to the second section, there's another one that deals specifically with changes to the land use districts. And then we have a final section at the end of the document that details any changes to the definitions. And one thing I'd like to mention as well is that, so any kind of general clerical changes aren't listed. So this is a, this is a broad overview of everything in the RFD, the major changes. All the other changes will be in the amending bylaw, which is, as you might have seen, is very long, I think it's fifty-three pages. So there is a lot of work that's been done. Some things that we haven't added is any kind of general clerical changes. So that includes capitalization, punctuation, numbering, font and formatting. Prepositions and conjunctions, abbreviations, anything that doesn't change the actual function of any kind of provision in the land use bylaw is not actually been added in the amending bylaw, just in terms of, because it is a clerical change, it doesn't affect the actual nature of provision. Additionally, it would have been too long to actually include in the amending bylaw. So we think the final product is something that's easier for both residents and the development authority to actually use. If you have any questions, we won't go through every single change, but if you look through it and have any questions, let us know. We want to bring this to you early so you have a chance to look at it. And then we will bring, if there's no changes, we will bring it to first reading, first reading at the next council meeting. So, thank you. I got nothing else to add.
All right, okay, questions, council? There's a lot of here, but I want to ask my, I'm gonna ask mine first off. I did mention it also to Daryl. So we, I am running into a lot of concerns with development been done in the past in residential areas that gutters, curves, roads weren't included. Now, I understand that's not something of that we can go back on because that should have been, but Daryl had mentioned that should this go in the land use bylaw or the municipal development framework plan?
So typically, stuff like that isn't included in land use bylaws. From what I've seen, I also talked to Devon from Palliser and he agreed with me that that's not something within a land use bylaw. What would be if there's a new subdivision would be maybe potentially in the area structure plan, spelling it out because municipalities would have the opportunity to provide comments on roads and specifications like that. Also stuff like concept plans, more specifics, looking at the road details. But it's more of an engineering thing and specifics on that. So it's not really included in a land use bylaw per se.
Okay, I'll, we'll discuss that further then because that's not about this document. I just wanted to be, this is a problem. So, all right, council, questions? Crystal?
Yeah, I do. Just one quick question in regards to the tourist dwelling. So even though you're removing it from all land use districts, they still were going to require the business license bylaw, right? So just maybe for public, why is being removed from all land use districts, but then it's still permitted? So why? Makes sense.
Um, so yeah, so we're taking it all out, we're taking it out of the land use bylaw completely. So it is still, it's going to be required for business licenses. That process is a lot simpler for residents and for us to administer. As well, there will be some requirements that relate to the land use bylaw. For example, tourist dwellings will only be allowed in dwelling units. So any, any unit, any land use district where a dwelling unit is allowed, a short-term rental will be allowed. So that does relate back to the land use bylaw, but specifically won't be regulated through land use bylaw in order to simplify the process. Does that kind of answer the question? Okay, thank you.
Tony?
Yeah, just clarification on one of the things that's being removed there, the communication structures, is that communications towers that are in the, in the town?
Yeah, so that is a thing. So how it works is ISED Canada is the sole decider on communication structures in throughout Canada. So if a provider wants to put a tower somewhere, the town really has no recourse to say no. What can be done is they can send a letter of non-concurrence to ISED Canada and they can say potentially no. But if there's no suitable other locations for a structure, then they essentially have, you can put it at wherever. So this is kind of standard now. It seems like ISED Canada is asking municipalities to remove it and make a policy. So that's another thing that's in the works and is essentially done is there is a telecommunication and sightings and design policy. It's done, it's just polishing it right now.
Okay, so that, it suggests replacing it with a council policy, then so that'll come later then and what will that policy kind of look like? We'll just kind of give consent?
Yeah, so there's a whole process laid out in it. So we start from, you know, talking to the C A O. And then it goes through an inter-department review. They also have to do a complete default public engagement that ISED Canada lays out. So that's an entire process they have to follow. And then from there, the town can consider, they followed all the design and citing protocols, whether a letter concurrence is a letter or letter of concurrence or non-concurrence is produced from the town. In this case, it would be the C A O moving forward.
Anybody else? Lisa? Just one clarification. I'm trying to figure it out in my head. When it comes to the addition of solar energy system freestanding and then the addition of solar energy system rooftop, I get the rooftop part and I get the removal of the solar energy system. But when it comes to the freestanding, does that also include like solar farms within the town drumheller on town drumheller land? Or is that just in the business development area?
So right now, solar is allowed in essentially every district. So there was a freestanding one approved in Wayne. So this is just kind of spelling out more specifics because right now there's only one guideline for solar energy systems. So this is more laying it out. The freestanding and rooftop, making it more regulated, also removing it for M P C because it is a hassle having to take it to M P C every two weeks, essentially now it seems like. Regarding solar farms, I wouldn't consider this a solar farm. This is more for residential individual parcel use.
Thank you.
Anybody else, Tom?
Yeah, one of the things that we always talk about when we look at bylaws, we look at policies is enforcement. So have you consulted with our bylaw officers, although they're not bylaw officers anymore, are they peace officers who basically do bylaw enforcement? About the enforceability of these things, that it's no use having a policy or a bylaw if we can't or we don't have the ability to enforce. So have you thought about that? Has that been talked about?
We haven't consulted with them, but we also haven't changed any stipulations in the enforcement sections of the administration, part four, part five. So nothing would really change regarding enforcement. It is really hard to enforce so many things. I do send every development application, development permit to Darcy. So he is aware of every development that is going on. So he is doing his best here.
Anybody else? Okay, I love the fact that you got the removal of restrictions on secondary suites. So thank you. Now, does that mean if I, I'm just hypothetically had a lot and I wanted to put a house on the, or a small casita kind of thing on the back side of the yard, that is that part of that or does it have to be part of the attachment of the home?
So you're saying you have the home and then like another smaller home in the back?
You wanted to build another smaller home on the back?
Yeah, so it's considered a garden suite in land use bylaw and that's permitted. So we did change a lot of it, moving it to permitted. And just kind of cleaned the regulations up. But yeah, you are allowed. The main, the main regulation and issue with that is the utility stuff. Owners are required to provide utilities from one connection. They can't have another connection somewhere from an alley or something like that. So it's kind of the main barrier for stuff like that.
Okay, and so then if, so that leads me into tiny homes because we've had, I've had issues with people saying they have a small lot and we will not allow tiny homes, which I'm not, I think we've made some consent, you know, some adjustments to that. But is there any, I didn't find anything specifically focused on that. So if somebody wanted to build a six hundred square foot home on a lot in Drumheller, can they?
There's no size minimums for homes. So if they want to build something that's small, they are able to as long as they follow the setbacks and stuff like that.
Okay, so then you lead me into my next question, the setbacks. So there's, there's people as they get older, including myself, that we don't want all the frontage that we have anymore. So if I wanted to build a new home, I wouldn't want to have the great big front yard of lawn that I have anymore. Are we being flexible with that?
So in neighborhood districts, the front setback's three to six meters. So there is some wiggle room. I think three meters is pretty fair from a property line for a house.
Okay.
Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, it is. So that we're not, you know, because if you go, well, where I live in Riverside, everybody's got these massive front yards that, you know, they're just, people are trying to make their life simpler and not have as much upkeep to look after. So the next subdivision over on Fourteenth Street, we did do some adjustments there. And I'm just wondering, taking that for an example, if there was even, you couldn't really do much more of an adjustment because of the way that lots are set up with the front garage. But if somebody wanted to flip that and put the garage in the back and move the house forward, we allow a three, did you say three to?
Three to six.
Okay, no, that's good. And I had one more. So this, I'm trying to understand this grazing and keeping of livestock addition.
That's just a minor change, actually. So we just added, rather than setting conditions on our, it's more of a clerical change, to be honest. So we had specific site regulations in our Badlands District. So we, we, what we call it is agricultural general. And then we'd say part of that is that you're only allowed to graze or keep livestock. Rather than having that regulation, we just changed it. So we had another definition called agriculture pastage. So that's anything, the same thing. We just changed the name and made it a little clearer. So that's anything that allows to keep and grazing livestock. So just a clerical change.
Okay, perfect. And then finally, so just, just to reiterate, the tourist dwelling now is just kind of all become part of the whole short-term rental program?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Okay, I think that's all of the marks I have. Let me just quickly look. Yes. Oh, yep, I saw that one. Yeah, so thank you. Anybody else on that one?
I just have one comment to both your question there and Colton Mitch's response about setbacks. So one of the things that's very important for people to realize is that setbacks aren't always equal. The predominant thought process is that your front property line is right behind the sidewalk, the, the public sidewalk. However, on your street is an example, that's true on your side of the street. The other side of the street is about two meters past beyond the sidewalk before the property line. So if they look like they have deep front yards, they do, but part of that is actually town property. Riverside Avenue or Riverside Drive, much greater even. I think there are three to four meters in some areas of front yard. So it just, it's a real, when you're applying for something for a new house or an addition, making sure that you know that what those dimensions are really important.
Okay, perfect for that. All right, Lisa, go ahead. So I just need clarification. I've had a lot of people come to me about certain businesses that have the owners and owners with their families and other families living up above the buildings. Was that part of where the addition of mixed use development comes into?
Yeah, so in the original bylaw, we had, I can't remember how, it was just a weird phrasing. So what we did, I'm sorry, this is in downtown district as well. So we changed it. And so now we're allowing residential and some commercial uses. So that is correct. We just tried cleaning it up with the addition of that because it was very unclear in how it was being worded and used.
And additionally, we added it as a discretionary use in the neighborhood center district to align with the M D P.
And also the general intent of that land use district as well.
Got a couple of brilliant young men here. Okay, no other questions? Okay, well then I guess you guys might as well carry on to the next one.
Okay, so the next one is a request for decision on the compliance certificates. So so right now we're using a policy from two thousand and three and there's several items and points in there that are kind of out of date. Point two, point four and point eight. So it's part of, you know, an effort to clean up the policies and bylaws for the planning departments. I went ahead and tried making the compliance certificate policy more up to date and modern compared to other municipalities. So it's kind of what you have in front of you. So I'm not going to go through it all, but it's pretty straightforward, I feel. And, you know, if you have any questions, I'll be answered.
Anybody?
I guess just to extend your time a bit, give you your moment in the sun. Tell us why, why you would want a compliance certificate. Tell the listening public why you'd want a compliance certificate.
So certificate of compliance is usually done by real estate agents, lawyer, surveyor or an owner of a parcel. It's just to ensure the buildings that are on that parcel are within this regulations of a land use bylaw. So it's setback, coverage, parcel coverage, stuff like that. And just making sure nothing's extending on to town land or private land. So with those compliance certificates is identifying these and then there is an issue making steps to correct them. So if it is a public lands, making an encroachment agreement, letter of consent. So there will be an encroachment policy moving forward at some point that entails all that stuff.
Yeah, just wondering how that fits in with a real property report. We get situations right now that have come to light mainly because of the flood mitigation project where people have purchased property thinking that they have this such and such a property. No need for a real property report. And then they find out later, all of a sudden now, well, that property that they thought was their property is not their property. So is there any provision for demanding a real property report when a, when a property changes hands or something like that?
There's no thing like that. So what the certificate of compliance does is essentially protects the new owners of any potential issues that we run into down the, down the line.
I think to add to that, sorry if I can finish Colt's comment. So if you are a new property owner, you're a good real estate agent will recommend that you include as part of the purchase agreement, a real property report. Some will steer you towards title insurance as an alternative because it's less expensive and quicker. But you don't know anything with title insurance. So you as the purchaser, until you find out something later. Usually, compliance certificates are a requirement of the mortgage company. So the banks usually require them. And so and, and we're seeing more and more real property reports. Like we will not see title insurance come in for a compliance certificate. We will only see real property reports come in for titles. So we see some, like I, I want to say we probably see fifty to sixty percent of the homes or business and properties sold. But there are a chunk that are not, that do not come to us. If it's an all cash deal, for instance, you may not actually see it. But as the purchaser, you know, the old T B at Emter, buyer beware, you should always try to ask for a real property report to have it included. Part of what's in this compliance certificate is that we state that there's a time limit on these things. We don't want one from nineteen seventy-eight because of course it'd be changes. So we do have a time limit on there. And I think if Colt wants to explain that piece a bit more, but it's really about trying to protect the purchaser of this, which is why we want it. So, yeah.
Crystal?
Yeah, and just to add to that, in the document in six point two, it actually states that the real property report can be used as eligibility where the survey has to be completed less than two years within six months. So there is some, some guidelines around the real property report in the.
Yeah, I guess we're, because obviously flood mitigation and we've ran into talking about this with, with residents that didn't know all the boundaries. Is there something that we can, because obviously they got to come to the town to change title, like is there not something we can require, like especially real property report?
So they don't come to the town to change title. So usually the transactions between two lawyers and then the lawyers can determine it. So I can use an example of a place I drove by today. A small apartment block west of Town Hall was for sale. All of the garage and part of the side yard of this apartment block is in a public right of way. It's in an alley. And the previous owners know that. It's been sold. We have not seen any document to come in for a real property report to demonstrate that. So it's up to, and, and we have indicated to the real estate agent, hey, by the way, you should tell any prospective clients that if it doesn't happen, like there will be a surprise to the new owners at some point, right? But we don't get, unfortunately, we don't get to be involved in the process of the sale of the transaction until after it's been completed. It'd be nice to change it, but we can't.
Is that a, that's provincial regulation? Or Tony?
Hey, just to add clarity here, the real property report lays out the legal property lines of the, of the property being purchased. That's all it does. The compliance certificate is where that document is taken to the town. It's compared against existing land use bylaws. And if they have changed, it, there's, there's the declaration that it was compliant at the time, but it's changed now. Or it's compliant at the time. So, so again, if you don't have a setback properly done and you buy it, that's your problem going forward. Title insurance kind of overrides that. So you have insurance protection on that error. But yeah, the compliance is just signed off by the town saying it's presently compliant with current land use bylaws. Meet setbacks, no encroachments, et cetera, et cetera.
All right, well, this is a two thousand and three document. So I think it's time it was updated anyways. So thank you for doing that. Okay, well, if there's no other feedback, we'll let you guys go. But I just want to say, Colt, thank you for spending the last few months with us and all the work you've done. We're going to miss you and Rocky View is very lucky to get you. And thank you to Mitch and Connor as well for all the work. I know you guys spent many, many hours working on this and thank you for all the, all the efforts put into it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right, well, we shall move on to eight point two point one, please, and we will call you forward, Rick.
Mayor and council, thank you very much. We're going to be talking a little bit about the sport, Drumheller Sports Council. The terms of reference, uh this really came about because of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And I'm very excited about presenting it to you today. So the Drumheller Sports Council pur- uh purpose would be to. Develop basically because of sport development within the town. The formation of Drumheller Sports Council provides an important form for identifying the town Drumheller and the surrounding neighbors. And the the concerns and opportunities for sport in our area. The word sport development shall be understood as the meaning that it integrates grassroots initiative. Athlete empowerment, state of the art facilities, hosting, which I think is very important, and tourism. Think this is the key for us down the road, certainly with the shoulder seasons. There's many, many opportunities. I just came back from a sports uh tourism conference. And there are opportunities out there for us, including working with Alberta Sports Alberta and uh. And uh travel Drumheller and the tourism in Alberta as well. So the whole idea behind the town of Drumheller's council would be the govern- governing body is a municipal corporation. And in accordance with the municipal act is assigned powers, duties and functions. The Drumheller Sports Council will have no delegated decision power on the town Drumheller Council. So it it's a, it's essentially an advisory committee. Um as it says here, you they would have no power. But I think the whole idea behind this is to get people within the community. That are associated with not for profits and they would be on this committee with your approval. So to facilitate, uh the next thing would be to council on the plan objectives would be to facilitate information sharing between sport organizations. And improve the variety of sport opportunities, venues and partner to bring events and tourism. To the town of Drumheller and surrounding areas, to emphasize the importance of sport building in a healthy community. For all residents in the town. To provide inclusive and accessible environment, community, diversity and sport experiences. Provide sport development advice to the town of Drumheller's council and to benefit the residents of Drumheller. To provide an input and recreation arts and culture department and annual operating, so they would give us some feedback as to. Maybe where we need to put our capital dollars as an example. Drumheller Sports Council criteria for membership, this is very important. The current involvement in the service provision of policy or program development in sports Drumheller. Letter, they must have a letter of endorsement from their uh not for profit sports groups. The ability to constructively participate in an advisory capacity. And again, it's gonna be for the whole of sports in Drumheller. Strong understanding of the local community and social environment, economic influences, good knowledge and understanding of local issues that are relevant to sport development. A willingness to contribute positively to the meanings in a fair and unbiased manner. Again, emphasizing the good of sport within the community. The ability to encourage participation and provide feedback for a community about sports. An ability to commit Drumheller Sports Council for required duration and the willingness to celebrate successes and achievements. For sport in the town and surrounding areas. The selection of the Drumheller Sports Council members will involve by calling for nominations. In a by a variety of advertisements placed in the communications department of town Drumheller, a nomination form must be completed. By anyone interested in serving the Drumheller's council member. A nominee must be a current, and this is very important, a current elected official. A member of good standing for a not for profit sports and organization from the town Drumheller. The nomination form must include a letter from that sports organization, letter of endorsement. So one counselor. From the town would be appointed to the Drumheller Sports Council. And and the counselor which shall be appointed annually at a meeting of the town of Drumheller. I'm suggesting that we have seven. Members at large who shall be appointed by the organizational meeting by the town of Drumheller for a one year term. Once the membership at large reaches a full term, the town Drumheller has an option to extend for another two years. This person must represent the not for profit sporting organizations within the town Drumheller. Uh to incorporate diversity and Drumheller Sports Council. The town Drumheller supports all members from diverse and inclusive backgrounds. And the sports council will establish policies and best practices that would ensure that the groups and individuals. Of the diverse backgrounds are culturally and sociably accepted and welcomed. Sports council shall recommend the town Drumheller council, the appointment and reappointment of any persons. To the membership of the sports council. The sports council may recommend the town Drumheller to increase and decrease membership. No member at large shall exceed six consecutive years without special permission by the town Drumheller. If any member shall be absent for more than three meetings, regular meetings, unless due to illness. Then the town may upon recommendation from the sports council declare the office as absent and will be vacant. Uh as far as the sport council chairperson, uh it's suggested that the manager of Recreation Arts and Culture. Of for the town Drumheller would act as the chairperson, the vice chair would be, shall be appointed by the members at large. The chairperson is responsible to conduct the meetings and ensuring fair and equitable opportunities for views and opinions. To be voiced and discussed by the sports council. The secretary shall be appointed by administration.
I'm gonna just interrupt you, Rick. It's me here, cause we we all read all this. So let's just go into like just highlights.
Okay.
Cause um council's responsibility is to have all this read before, so.
No problem. Okay, and um. So to to simply say about the administration support, we would provide administration support for. Uh the sports council and provide information of good governance and insurance and. Issues such as conflict of interest confidentiality. The quorum and voting uh simply be must have fifty percent. And all of the uh members will entitled to one vote and the chairperson would only vote in the case of a tie. Uh the conflict in interest and confidentiality.
Up, up a bit. You don't like, you don't need to actually go through all, every clause. I think what the mayor is saying is just to hi- hit the highlights of what we're proposing.
Okay. Okay. Um having said that, um. The, you can read the confidentiality and and interests and the how the council would be held quarterly. And also uh having a minimum of four meetings a year. And um they would have to adhere to the Drumheller Council Committee Procedure and Bylaw and the Council Code of Conduct. And then report, reporting minutes of the Drumheller Sports Council for each meeting will be provided. By member, two members by uh the council of Drumheller. That's it.
Perfect. Yeah, no, sorry, just every, if you know, if everything, all this goes, somebody's gonna have to read all the document to make sure they wanna be. Part of it anyways. So council, you have questions? Uh looks like he got a few. Let's start with Lisa.
Thanks, Rick. Um so I'm kinda questioning, I guess, the format or how you're putting together the committee. Personally, I think. A counselor should not be on there, and my reasoning for that is if you're having seven. Uh members at large and a counselor and then yourself as the chair. I think there should be community driven, right? They're the ones who know better than most of us at this table. What they need or want, and if you're coming back to council quarterly, well. I would think that without having a counselor on there, you bring it every quarter and yeah. Allows to discuss issues that you think are important or the committee thinks are important. If you're also only meeting once every quarter. So it just needs a little redundant to me. But otherwise, I like the concept that should have had it a long time ago. Um and the fact that you can leverage more grants and whatnot for opportunities in this valley is great. But I think, and know that councils on a lot of other boards and it. It's hard at times to make it to everything, and the other aspect is is that by limiting the term to only one year. I think you're really limiting yourself, cause some volunteers. Well, just it's hard to get volunteers this is. So I would think that, you know, if you offered a two year. Or three two year terms, so so your max of six, I think that would be probably better in the long run. But that's just my opinion.
So to answer that question, um many, I did a lot of research on sport councils throughout the country. And they've always included a counselor so that there's a vested interest and knowing what's going on and they can speak to issues as they come up. So that's the reason why we actually, actually many of the sports council actually have two members of council on on this committee. We we decided to go with one, so that's the first issue is, so that's just the comment.
Hold on, so but we'd still have administration at the top of that committee. Right, as well as another administrator taking the notes and everything, so. I don't know about the rest of you, but I I think that that would be adequate for the town's presence, otherwise it's just gonna be. A town board and I know what happens when that happens, especially in small towns. Most people don't feel like being honest or open or having good open conversations, cause it's like, oh, it's just what the councils want anyways, right? So if you take that aspect out of the picture, you might have better communication amongst the board.
Uh to your other point then, um. The whole idea behind having people serving um a minimum of one year, because sometimes these sports organizations, some people don't. Either their tenure lapses or they decide not to return, so it's an option to come back to them after the first year and then renew the second and third year. So that's the reason for that.
Uh Patrick.
Um yeah, thank you for the presentation, um. Prior to even striking the thing, there were discussions um around the table about some of these things that we could work together on. Some of it was group fundraising, I remember Tom talking about that. Uh others are forming an association that could be supportive of facilities, access other grants and stuff. I'm just curious, what are, do you have one or two priorities or can you give me an example of the type of? Measurable action that this group would be doing?
Well, first of all, I think what's very unique is even though. Say a minor hockey organization, a minor ball organization will be serving on this as this this council. That it's not just about hockey and it's not just about ball, but it's about the fairness and equity among all sports and bringing in new sports. So I think that's a really important point. Um the second thing would be. That um we would be looking, you know, at improvements such as, you know, what? What other soccer fields do we need? What could we do?